Okay, I'm going to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris is not here this evening, so Tracy has graciously volunteered to do the secretarial duties tonight. So, our mission statement?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Margaret.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
And Chris is absent with notice, and...
Jeff is absent with notice as well. Okay, next would be approval of the agenda. Just one change, number seven, Board of Education's student rec report is going to come off, so we will renumber after that. Haley is in the community play, and they, her play practices are Monday in August, so she's not able to make our meetings in August. So, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing down all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next would be approval of the consent agenda items. Motion would be in order.
Close session.
Do you have, that's okay. Who's, Tracy, did you second?
Support.
Dan, okay. We have closed session minutes down here. Brian, would you like to speak to?
In the personnel report, this, it may look a little longer because we've had no meetings in July, and with the voluntary severance package, it became official when that timeline ended, so there's quite a few new hires and some resignations. But I'd like to introduce two of our new hires. One is David Kochen, who is the, for elementary principal, and Heidi Napier, for Dean of Students at the elementary school at Lee. So if I start with David, introduce you and...
Sure, right there if you like. First, I'd like to thank the board, I think, for this opportunity. It's a great experience so far through the interview process and the few days that I've come into work. Also looking forward to the privilege of working with Heidi also. I believe we would make a great team and do some very good things at the elementary. I'd like to introduce my family, my wonderful wife Kathleen.
Hi.
And my oldest daughter, our, I keep saying mine, our.
Yeah, she had a little something to do with it, yeah.
Our oldest daughter Abby, who will be junior, and then youngest daughter Emily will be freshman.
Nice to meet you all.
Look forward to upcoming school year, look forward to working, starting work on Monday.
Excellent, thank you, good to have you here.
And our Dean of Students, Heidi Napier.
Heidi, thank you so much for this opportunity, the Board of Education, for any difficulty everyone who's kind of had to put up with me through this process. I want to first introduce my family. This is my mother Sonia. I like to call her Nanny because we all go around and say that, oh, thank you for all of your support as I worked in the dollars, etc. This is my youngest son Oregon, and my oldest son Christian, and this is a great friend of the family that I'm with. I just want to go back to thanking the last two years. For the last, for the last two years, it's been a wonderful opportunity. All of the support has really made this possible, made me feel comfortable enough to come forward to be able to do this. So, I wish there was staff in front of me to be able to thank them, because as a new employee two years ago, it's not always easy jumping in, and they made that easy, so that's nice. I'm excited to work with Dave. I hope to provide some consistency within the building, and for the staff, and for the students, and for the parents, and just a nice transition, I'm excited. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good for you, Heidi. Thank you. Okay. It has been moved and supported. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, welcome, and congratulations. Absolutely. Next, Superintendent and Legislative Update, Brian?
Just to let the board, I knew we'd have kids here in the summer, so I did say after the Personnel Report, they were welcome to stay or leave, whatever works for their families to stay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So, Personnel Report...
Our meetings are fun, but you know, if you have something else you'd like to do.
Metty Board.
And you will. Yep, absolutely, thank you.
Legislative update, there's not much going on, obviously, for the summer break for the legislature. From a school perspective, we are well underway with the cleaning. If you've looked at the high school, the high school's almost completely done in terms of waxing. Kudos to the custodial staff here, they stripped that right down to the original tile, and got a lot of the stains out that have been there for years, so they've done a remarkable job. Furniture comes in next week, we have 1,800 new desks and chairs arriving next week. All the old stuff has been removed per the contract. The technology that's been installed in the media centers and the auditorium, they're scheduled to come in next week to finalize it in what they call, what's the term they use?
Commission.
Commission the equipment, which will be then getting training on the new systems, but it's pretty exciting. At Lee Elementary School, the cabinet said there was a little delay in the production, but they are scheduled to arrive on Wednesday, so they will start installing those student cubbies in the, in the elementary school.
This Wednesday?
This Wednesday, and then they'll finish it up next week. The lockers, fifth grade lockers are installed and look really great at the middle school, they blend right in with the existing lockers, so that's completed. So, all the stuff that we've had started, we are now wrapping up and getting ready to open, open schools. So, another week, we will be, I think, pretty much ready to go. Sports teams started camp, football started camp this week, and just, the kids are excited to be back, and there's an energy, so.
That it?
That's it, that's it. There's not much to report.
We like that. Okay, next is public comment portion of our meeting. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, you can do so by coming up to the podium. There is a card there, if you would like to leave your name and telephone number, if you have an answer, if you need an answer to a question. So, is there anyone who would like to address the board? No, okay, moving on. Presentation, the 2016-17 Student Parent Handbook.
As I, we should have a hard copy in front of you, because I said, there is, I'm not asking for any action tonight, so we can spend the two weeks to look at it. It may look like a lot of changes, what I, what I try to do is get it to be more user-friendly from the perspective of, as you look at the page two and three, identifying all the sections and alphabetizing it, so it's a quick reference for someone rather than the way it was. Updating the Personnel on the left side. So, I'm gonna start with, in the page six, really it starts to meet, there's some minor changes there to the letter that was in the initial. Page eight and nine, in section one, we talk about advertising outside activities. In looking at practices, you know, there was within 24 hours, you know, if it happens on a weekend, it wasn't clarified, so we elaborated, within 72 hours, you should get an approval notice of whether you can advertise outside announcements and so forth. Some of it was just logistic and word chaining changes, like age of majority, we referenced the board policy, the form that's actually used, that, whether it's for staff or for students who are, that would qualify. Under, on page nine, we identified the administrative guidelines reference the Health Department, so rather than it be a sending somewhere to some, to a location and sending them again, we just referenced to the local and state Health Department for those communicable diseases where they have to be out of school for a period of time, or that are considered contagious. Emergency closings and delays, we updated some of the ways that we notify parents, and then, out of the statements, it's our attempt to provide as much advance notice to parents as possible, especially if they gotta make childcare arrangements. Emergency medical authorization, a will, just a word change, changing from will to may, will determines that it's going to affect it, but it may not affect it, just some minor changes.
Is that like, is that an emergency card? You're saying if they don't turn an emergency card in?
This is the medical authorization form at the time of enrollment, so this is more of, it's used for multiple persons, but it's somewhat the emergency card, because the emergency card's spoken later on in the document that's about keeping the phone numbers up to date and the contact names. There's a, there's a, on field trip forms, on the medical emergency card, there's a spot where it says, who are we authorized to, and if you don't have that filled out, it implied that you would jeopardize your educational, it really doesn't, but it may, it may, if we have to delay, maybe going on a field trip as part of an education, and so forth. Enrolling in school, just clarifying that if someone is denied admission, this is more for the school of choice, because there would have been a disciplinary record, that they have a hearing, it was kind of vague and kind of missing, there were some words missing, so with either the superintendent or the designee, if I'm not available, explaining why someone might be denied. Fire, lockdown, and tornado drills, we've referenced the board policy 8420 that this section speaks to, and just using the correct name, it's the Crisis Management Plan in the district. Health services, this is the actual policy. One of the recommendations from Neola is they have their own handbook, and they recommend putting in the health services that to be in compliance of the law, you may require periodic health examinations, that's usually with the Health Department, you know, physical examinations or athletics for sports. This section is the actual policy from 5310. Immunizations require us by law to remove certain, who are not, students that are not compliant by the deadline, and directs the building principal or designee if there's a waiver request, just some language cleanup changes there. Illness and injury, the accident report, it references the form that we use as a district. One of the things that I've been working on is trying to create some consistency so that schools aren't creating their own forms, we have a series of forms that people should be using, so it references what form they use. The emergency sheet updating, just reminds parents, it's their, it's their responsibility to update them, it's very critical they do update them to make sure we have the latest phone numbers.
And how is that different from emergency medical authorization?
How is the...
How is the emergency information sheet different from the emergency medical authorization?
This sheet is part of the enrollment packet. The emergency medical authorization, when you go on a field trip or they fill out an athletic form, there's usually a box on there that identifies, who do I contact, or who can I, who's authorized to give my child medical treatment? That's also on...
You were saying it before, that's specifically when you're going on a field trip?
Correct. That's on a field trip, and that's also on...
So, if you don't have all of that filled out, you might not be able to go on a field trip?
Correct, especially if we know of a child that may have some medical issues that we have to deal with, that's critical that that piece is in there. It's typically not any problem, I can't speak that it has been a problem, it was just more of a claim, that it's not a guarantee that it's going to jeopardize them, but it may, we may have to hold them back, we don't have all the contact information.
So, we don't just print off kids that are going on the field trip, we just don't print off that stuff out of power school?
Typically on the field trip, it's the permission slip form that we use now, has that box in there, so it's a check that the parent has authorized the child to go on the field trip, and it's got that information on one. And the field trip guidelines, the teacher's supposed to have those forms with them at all times, so if there is an emergency, they have that number, emergency numbers right then and there. Lost and found, just correcting our practice, our practice is usually at the end of the year, we usually either send them to wash or donate them to a charity, it's not periodically.
Okay, can, I'm sorry, can I just go back to that for a second?
Which one?
This whole emergency card and the field trip thing. Isn't it wasting time and energy and paper to have two completely different, you've gone on a field trip, it's already in power school, who all the emergency contacts are, you print out the sheet, that's what we do, and there's a field trip, you just print out that sheet, and it's got the kid's name and their emergency information that's in the system, instead of a whole nother form, whole, more paperwork.
The form that they fill out is the permission slip to go on...
I understand.
On that form, we ask them to put that.
I know, but I'm saying, isn't that, I just think it, I think it's redundant, I think it's the same.
The challenge...
We already have the information in the computer on the system, you print out one sheet, you got a permission slip that says Joey can go on a field trip, Joey's gone, you push the button, you print it out, there's all, there's his parent contact, and there's the emergency contact. I'm just, I'm just asking, it seems like it's double.
Several of our families do not keep the emergency numbers updated. Like, when we do the attendance report, after, what is it, second hour in high school, we're, the automated attendance, if your child's absent, we don't have an excuse. We get a report on whether how many numbers are disconnected, there's a large percentage of our, those numbers that are disconnected that we now have to then follow to make sure, it's not...
So, we do double the work so that we know we have the most accurate at that time when they're going on the trip?
That's, that's so that teacher doesn't have to have a disconnected phone number, I mean, that's...
Well, it doesn't...
I haven't thought about it from your perspective that you presented, but that's the way that if a parent's filling it out, you know, a week before the field trip, the odds that their number is gonna put down is probably gonna be the most accurate number we have.
So, how is it double the work, though, I guess, I'm, because if the parent's doing it?
I know, I'm just saying, you're, if, I was just asking, just wasting, wasting paper, you have another whole form, and...
But it's on the same sheet, right? They're already filling out?
But you're, I'm saying, you're filling out, you're signing your kid to go on the permission slip, and then you're filling out all that stuff for emergency contact, when it's already in the system.
Yeah.
You push the button, and you print out Mrs. Durst's class is going, and these are the kids that are going, you print out their stuff. That, that, I'm just saying, but the point of if the numbers aren't up to date and all that, I get that, you gotta have, and that's a better, that's a better answer than doing.
Well, and I like it because if, if I know, for example, a field trip is on a Wednesday, as a parent, I can put someone down who's available on a Wednesday, because maybe my emergency contact says someone else.
Right, and may not be someone on your emergency, yes, that's right, that's a good point, yep.
So, I kinda like that, yeah, it's more individualized.
Yep.
The, lost, found, is at the end of there, meal charges, this was originally approved by the board in, I wanna say June of 14, about not having students go without a meal.
Right.
As we've gone through now, two full years, the original policy had it, that you had one lunch credit. We run this report every Thursday, every Friday, the letters go out to any families that have, by Thursday, you could be in a lunch credit with more than one. So, in looking at what we, our pattern over the last two years, that balance seems to be the, when we start notifying parents about, typically, they're paying below that amount, so they can get the letter still, and then they'll just reimburse the money. It's some of our families that hit above that $25 mark, that were struggling paying the bill. Some of the things that we've come up with, or we've, why there's some high balance, there was, for whatever reason, the belief that you continue if you're receiving free and reduced lunch year after year, where you have to resubmit your form by a certain date, and if that form didn't get submitted, then you automatically get moved to paid lunch. And so, a parent may, so we're trying to tighten that process, so that parents who aren't free lunch, that we have more of a personal conduct to say, make sure that form gets in, so that we don't have some of these balances. Because if they go for a period of when they stop becoming eligible, they're being charged, and then they resubmit the form and they become eligible, that period, we can't charge towards free and reduced lunch. So, this is more of a practical, that we, we allow up a credit. Currently, we have $1,900 still in outstanding lunch bills. Most of them are in this, there's only, when I look through the list, there's probably a dozen that are over $50. And we're just, again, we're trying not to penalize the kids standing in line, there's kindergartners on that, some, some elementary kids, there's like one or two high school kids on there that we're dealing with, but they have a unique situation that we're dealing with, so.
Brian, is it still a case that when families turn those forms in, that helps the districts get important information, other than qualifying families for free and reduced lunch? I was always under the impression that there was other information, that Title I information, some of those kinds of things, does that come from those?
Title I is based on your free and reduced lunch counts from the previous school year. So, for instance, this past school year, when we turn in those counts, our dollar eligibility for next school year comes from the previous school year, so it's always a year behind. So, it does help us potentially gain dollars, if there's additional dollars allocated to Title I. It does potentially help us qualify for grants that base solely on your free and reduced lunch population.
So, I always think it's, it's one of those things that people feel they're shamed. There's all kinds of things with turning those forms in, I think. And it's hard to help, get the word out that that, even if you think you don't qualify, turning that form in may be some great information that we might have that might help, you know, even if you don't think you qualify, or even, you know, I mean, all that kind of stuff.
They're hard to figure out, too, they have...
Are they?
Yeah, they're, they're kinda hard to figure out sometimes, so that, that keeps people from filling out.
Just the information on the document?
They've, they have, over the years, streamlined that process, but it is, you gotta really think as you're processing the different sections, and it can be confusing if you're not used to using certain terminology.
Would it help to have people... It's personal information, so to try and have people who are available to help people fill those forms out, it probably feels like an invasion, you know, and not anything people would want to have happen, but it just feels like...
I know those that were free lunch or reduced lunch one year, and will not turn their forms in the second year. Sue Bevins does reach out to them, and whether it's through, if we have the email or whether it's a phone call, to say, remember to get your, your application in.
Yeah, so there's, right, that it's a one-time thing, yeah, yeah, well, that's good that that connection happens. So, Brian, is the way this, this thing is $25, what does that mean for the student? They just get, it says they're allowed up to?
It provides us the option that we could provide an alternate meal, or not provide them. We have not done that. It just gives us a, some flexibility with that. Sue, Sue Bevins, Director of Food Service, did cost out what it would cost to create an alternate meal that wasn't, with the few students that we may be involved at each building, and the manpower to actually put it and order stuff for it, it actually is not cost-effective for us to do that. So, ideally, you're not at that $25, but it allows us that, we're not gonna not provide students a lunch, we're gonna make sure every student has a lunch.
So, even if they're over the $25, we're still giving them lunch?
That's currently our practice right now. But the one credit, the one credit could...
No, no kids not gonna, because we were, we were, kids were getting turned away, you know, and we said absolutely not.
Well, that's why when it says they will be allowed up to, it kinda reads like, like you said, there is some flexibility that we wouldn't have to, and I want to make sure that doesn't happen.
Well, the reason why the $25 was chosen was, when we run the reports, it gives us time, if you figure lunch is $3, you have five, that's 15, that gives you almost, almost a two-week period to kind of get with the parent to figure out why the bill's not being paid. And if there's a hardship case, which we've had, and the parents have made payments, we've worked with them, but it allows us to go beyond that, as long as we're having in that, having that communication. But we have not turned away any child...
Okay, and that's not the plan, then?
That is not...
Just want to make sure.
But, just, you know, as of today, we ended the year $2,300, we're down to $1,900. There's a couple families that are struggling, you know, last year, I reached out to the Richmond Lions Club, who helped pay for it, they had, they had talked to me once again about that, I get, but I know it's not gonna be that much they're gonna be able to afford, so I'm gonna see what I can get for that. Page 14 just references the policy number. Some of this was put in place so that parents or students knew, this isn't just something the administration made up, it's part of our policy, and most of this is part of some type of guidance that we receive from the state or federal government that we have to have. Review of instructional materials, this was a change to centralize if a parent wishes to review instructional materials, that were consistently, there's a point of contact for a parent, that we consistently show them the materials of what they would be, if they're requesting it. Typically, that would come more towards a human growth and development period where parents may want to see the curriculum of their students or... Page 15, just some language clarifications, at the bottom of page 15, that should be Superintendent or Designee, the of did not get caught, I'm gonna review it.
At the bottom of the page, should you wave?
Wave, yeah, may wave, yes, thank you. There's some language, just can, may, some minor change, doesn't change this or the contact. Student fundraising represents the board policy, 9210, which is, puts us in compliance with fundraising during school hours with the Healthy Choice, Healthy Kids Act. Principal or designee, student records references board policy, and what's considered in directory information. There's no changes, other than the building principal or designee on 17. 18, there's no changes. Student sale is just putting principal or designee, because oftentimes, it may be the Dean of Students that's authorizing it, or if the principal's out of the building and something comes, they could designate the secretary through a conversation to authorize it, just clarification. Student well-being, emergency procedures using the District Crisis Management Plan.
And with respect to that, does that happen at the beginning of each school year?
At the beginning of each school year, yes. So, the current plan is, I met with Chief Teskey about reviewing that plan, and so that will be printed for all the staff members at the beginning. Has updated contact information, and who's on the current crisis as of that point in On page 20, just medication must be brought to the school directly. 21 is the use of facility, permission of the principal or designee, again, it could be the Dean of Students. We are a closed campus, students should leave, the sentence, unless for educational purposes. You know, as people look at this, they, they may consider, well, what if I go to, like, AIS? Well, that would be for educational purposes, or a field trip, that's been pre-approved by the principal, and those outside courses, like AIS, would be pre-approved through the scheduling. Visitors and volunteers, we don't give them passes, they actually get a badge, shall report to the principal or designee, the designee in this case is the main office secretary where they sign in.
What kind of badge?
Typically, it says...
I've never gotten a badge.
Should receive a sticker badge that says visitors.
So, I've gone into that elementary school many times, and I've never received a badge.
I think the problem is they're there when you sign in, but they, I don't know that I've ever been told to fill one out, I just kinda fill one out on my own, so maybe they just need to get better about saying, write your name down. The expectation, the process?
I guess.
I think so, yeah.
Well, on page 22, this is one of the things that I, I mean, I think it's, we have a meeting with the principals and secretaries, and I think it's the 17th, going over some new procedures. One of them is volunteers, when they sign in, they're signing in confirming that they understand FERPA, and that they can't share things, that they're volunteering in a classroom, they can't discuss that outside in the community, because they are technically a, it's gonna be part of the sign-in log. And I actually, we, I learned of this, this activity's done in some districts through the interview process for a principal, that was one thing that they shared, how they address the FERPA issue with all their volunteers that come into the classroom, so.
It's a great idea.
So, that will be part of that, that training with the secretaries, I think it's on Wednesday the 17th. Student assessment, we just references assessments, they are required to take the assessments by the State of Michigan, or defined by the Michigan Department of Education. There is some, the State of Michigan will tell you that... There is some, the state of Michigan will tell you that there is no opt-out language, and you have parents through various organizations that believe there's federal opt-out language. We don't, our practice is not to get in conflict with the parent, but we do have to recognize that if we allow parents and students to opt out, it's going to jeopardize the accreditation system, through the accountability system that the state has if we don't test 95% of our kids.
The opt-out process is...
Typically, the opt-out...
Different state by state.
Correct.
Right, so, so like I know in the social media world, there's articles that come out and they're passed around and everybody gets, oh, but then the fine print says, oh, this is what happens in New York, or, oh, this is what's supposed to be happening in Iowa, and they assume that it's a Michigan thing, and I think that that sometimes is...
And we do have annually...
Tricky to maneuver.
A handful of parents that we address that with every year, and how they, how we handle that opt-out with them individually. A lot of it is just communicate with them, telling them, because maybe just misinformation about the assessment. You know, when the M-step first came out, there was a lot of concern with the time, the amount of time that took. That since has been reduced, it's still a large, a long task, I'm not going to, I will give the parents credit on that one, it is a long task, but that has been reduced. So, a lot of it is just a conversation with the parents to help them understand what the assessment is and how we use the assessment. References, taking groups to test, just a reference to district assessments, NWA is the one that we typically use. It often references classroom assessments and tests. Testing out clarifies that if there's no end-of-course exam, one of our high school exams will be used, the state of Michigan put on page 23, identified end-of-course examinations, which we typically use for student, parent, or students that want to opt out. And the board policy, or, excuse me, the administrative guidelines, 5460, allow for credits to be given and count towards the number of credits for graduation. Right now, some of the opt-out, it can only be, as it said there, credits for the course earned by a student through this process can be used to fulfill course requirements or course sequences, but may not be counted towards required number of credits needed to graduate. We don't have many kids that opt out as a whole. It's more on a case-by-case that this would be applied to see what the course is. It's not intended to hold anybody back from graduation, but you want to make sure that the courses are taken and being tested out, they've demonstrated that competency to master that curriculum. So, it just adds that through that guideline, it does allow that discretion to... Page 24, you'll see a lot of this has strike through, it's going to appear later on with the current policy that was approved by the board. So, I skipped to 28, talks about middle school and high school, course offerings are available on the website. We clarified, we took the dual enrollment on page 29 and created its own section that students in those grades may be eligible for post-secretary if they meet the requirement. And a lot of times, they're looking at a college readiness assessment, so how they scored on an ACT or a PSAT or an SAT to determine whether they qualify for dual enrollment.
Brian, about under grading velocity, it says Richmond Community Public Schools can take on public?
The grading, we will be looking at the grading. Ms. Pashan has requested that we look at that AD/20 this year, I want to get a group together to really look at it. I believe we need to first make sure that we're implementing it to the tenor of what the intent of that policy was first, and if we're not, then how do we make any change? We should be, I can't, I'm not saying we're not, but I want to make sure, I want to verify that first before we look at making any type of changes for this. I was not part of that discussion when it happened, so I want to kind of pull the history out. I didn't feel it was justice to make any changes at this point, because I didn't have all the players in that conversation, not only teachers, but administrators and as well, students that are part of that discussion.
Is it the third school year or fourth school year?
Wouldn't you say it's at least the third, right?
This, I think, I think this is the four.
No, it might be year four.
This is the four.
It might be year four.
Because, yeah.
It was the year before I started.
It was the first year of the year.
Yes.
Right. This is the year four.
Well, I'm just going to ask that, and I'm glad that this wasn't thrown anywhere, because that was a horrific process, right, wrong, or otherwise, and this board took a lot of flak for that policy, so I'm just asking you that, and Anthony, as part of his job, that it's a well thought out.
Is there going to be adjustments?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well communicated, well thought out, which, you know, I have every thought that it's going to be, but the history is not good about this particular policy.
Well, I want to make sure that all the players are at the table, not only the teachers and administrators, but we also need the students' perspective and the parents' perspective.
There wasn't.
So...
Any thought before?
Right.
There are many districts that do the AD/20, different versions of that, but I just want to make sure, I didn't want, because it's, we're staying the same for next year, but there is a, I will be looking at it with the groups, just to see, are we, are we doing it the way it was intended to be implemented, and it's going to be taking some history and research that I'm going to have to do on that part to lead that.
I would think that would be a pretty easy question to answer.
Right. Is there, I mean, obviously, Mrs. Pashan didn't bring it up, there was some...
There was some discussion about, among the administrators, when we had, when we were going over this, and some buildings feel they have a, Mr. Bartel spoke, he feels they had a, his building had a more solid, felt it was much more successful, I don't know if that's the correct word I'm using, but, so we want to see what's, how are they implementing it and using it compared to how the high school is implementing it, to make sure that, number one, it is consistent, because it is the policy, this is how we're grading, and again, I'm not, I don't want to indicate that there is inconsistency, but that's where I'm going to start. Because if there is inconsistency, then we need to fix that first.
Yeah, that would be very distressing.
So...
Right.
On page 32 and 33, talks about report card periods, we were with the students that grades are online, we're trying to promote parents using the Power School because it is the latest grade, you don't have to wait till the end of the card marketing or progress report. However, if a parent does need a printed copy, we will print a copy if they don't have access. The fourth card markings, we will send home as we've always done, and I'll go through, and grades K4, first, second, first semester, and third card markings are the academic terms, fourth and second semester, fourth market period or second semester will be mailed home, so they'll always be given to the students at the elementary school. At the middle school and high school, they are online, and we're trying to promote more people using Power School, because it's, it's a vehicle that we can, we need to capitalize more on. However, again, if their printed copy is needed, we will get a printed copy for a family that, that needs a printed copy. And then the final one, which is the fourth card or semester two, those would still be mailed as we've always done. Typically, they get mailed out the Monday, Tuesday after school gets out by the counseling Graduation requirements, this was in a, in a previous, I'm drawing a blank on the policy name, because I forgot to write it down. We had required that they have at least a valid score on the high school assessment, so they take that SAT as part of the graduation requirements. Outside credits, setting a date that they need to be received by us, because as you're processing for graduation, if you are, you do not have enough credits to graduate, you don't participate in the graduation ceremonies, the policy, you have to have the credits. So, the Friday prior to graduation is the date that we're trying to get, make sure we have all credits. This would be students who are taking online courses or corresponding classes.
Do we feel that we're good with the class of 2017, those changes that were made there?
This, yeah, this, yeah.
On top of every student that's in that class?
Well, the two years that I've been here, the, this, that deadline date has been told the community, the students, but it hasn't been defined in the handbook, and there hasn't been issues with it that I'm, brought to my attention. So, students know, if you're doing an online course or dual enrollment, you got to have your stuff completed by this date. We just defined it in the handbook, it's been a practice, but it hasn't been written down.
Talking about the world language credit.
Oh, on the next page?
On page 20, or 34.
Oh, I'm sorry, 34.
Sorry. Talks about world language, class of 2017, one credit of world language, blah, blah, blah.
I can't speak, I'm going to say, yes, the counselors have communicated, because we put it in the course catalog booklet, and we've made those a changes, changes when we approved this back in February, those courses for the CTE.
So, we can safely say that they know for sure that everyone that's in that class is good to go in that area?
The two counselors at the high school, I, I don't want to say 100, because I don't know 100, but I would be pretty close to saying, yes, they would be, because as soon as that was made, it's a part of the board adjustment back in February when it approved those, those courses, that was then communicated in the course guide to all the students. And we actually put that in a section of, specifically in that course guide. The credits here are almost identical, we made some, I just kind of added some changes because it says English 9 or approved alternate, so if they're taking some other course that is an English credit...
Nearly 2 million Michigan students head for schools, and whether they walk or ride the bus, drivers need to pay strict attention to school zone.
When you look at the math, the law allows students to take, and it says, under Algebra II or approved alternate, some students can take Algebra II over a two-year period, and that can qualify, that that's acceptable. You'll see the physical science in, beginning with the class of 2020, you'll see on here the two-world language credits unless they complete that CTE program, and then you also have the 40 community hours at the bottom.
Brian, I'm just curious if you think that somehow in the graduation requirement language, the community service language eventually needs to be there, or?
It does have it on the last page of 30, on the bottom of 34, 40 hours of community service credit, beginning with the class of 2020.
Right, don't, it just, because, because people might not realize that that's a credit, you know what I mean? If it's not listed also as a graduation requirement in the other part, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, they aren't issued, oh, I see the word credit, it's really not a credit, it's...
A requirement.
It's a requirement.
To graduate.
So, it's a set of the words.
So, if somebody does 25, are we going to prevent them from graduating? Or, I mean, I mean, you know what I mean, and so if the language isn't under graduation requirement, I don't know, I don't know.
Let me, I'll make a note to add or revise some language and I can send it out.
I think it's a good point, because I think, I think you are saying that if you don't get the community service hours in, you aren't graduating.
Correct.
So, yeah, I think that's a good point.
More than, communicating more than one or some hours if they have a good one.
No changes on 35. 36 talks about clarification of some of the awards that are given. By going forward, we have some academic celebrations that will be on the calendar, it's already listed for each of the grade levels next year for next, I think it's the end of May, June, so it's kind of, it defines some consistency on how, what we're looking at, whether we're talking all As, perfect attendance, et cetera.
Hey, Brian, under elementary school on 36, the second one down, I think it's supposed to be all As instead of all Alls.
Yes, all As, thank you.
Yeah. It's all Alls down in the middle school.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
All Alls. Just to create some consistency in how we're applying certain awards, it still leads to discretion for certain grade level or departmental awards that they want to, you know, most improved or so forth. At the high school, what I'm proposing is that we honor our senior convocations with students with cords based on their cumulative GPA in those subject areas. This is, many districts offer this as an option. It's a pretty powerful statement when you see the various cords on students that, especially when they have multiple cords, it says a lot about the program, and when they wear them at graduation, I think it's recognized them, so there's some of the cords that are listed there, and the colors that they would be issued for. The honor roll I put due to German, because I could not remember for the life of me the cord color for honor roll, so that will be corrected before you get the final version. And I think I got, I think that's actually gold, and the National Honor Society is another color, so I got to, I will double-check those, so, just on your notes. School counselor and social worker, we added that in there, just clarifying, it was referencing, it was referred to both, but it only referenced the school counselor. Student educational technology, this is exactly right from the policy that was approved by the board regarding technology use when we did all the updates for that.
Should it say that, that it's board policy?
Board policy, yes.
Does it say?
I don't think it references, but I would be consistent, so it's like the other ones.
The other ones are, yeah.
When it says to all students, since we eliminated the position at the elementary, who are they, who do they have access to? Is it the middle school counselor then?
Well, from a school counselor, we can, we can use, we can use any counselor, because part of the social worker is for at-risk kids, too, it's not just special education. For our two social workers, actually, only one is paid, one FT is paid out of special, the other SP, FT is paid out of 31A, so that would be an access to them. Then we get into student activities, it's just clarifying some of the athletics, the actual student athletic code of conduct handbook, it clarifies the Michigan High School Athletic Association, referencing instead of athletic director, it references the dean of students. There was some words missing out of that one. Page 40...
Hold on a second, let me just make sure. Is there anywhere in this that talks about, because I don't think I see it, about dress code and that kind of stuff?
It's coming up, it's coming up, section four.
Okay, thanks.
Brian, you know how many students, just to go back on page 42, how many students were not allowed to participate in a dance because of academics?
I do not have that off the top of my head.
Do we know that that was in fact even done?
Yes.
On a consistent basis?
I know that it was done.
I just remember when this policy first came our way, because it was an adjustment a couple of years ago, and there's a part of me that fully understands why it's there, but there's a part of me that also struggles with it, just because high school is very social, and so are we, I don't know, if a kid's struggling one night to dance with friends, is that, I don't know, I struggle with it, I guess.
Well, and I guess that I, when you're talking like that, and you did make that point when you did this, the biggest issue I have is I don't think it's consistent, so it either has to be done consistently, or we don't do it at all. And I think, I think Tracy's point was good at the time and still is, but I think there's too much inconsistency in how we do this stuff.
And I also think that, you know, it's just, it's a policy in place, is it communicated enough? Is it, is it... Is it, is it, you, two days before the dance, you find out you can't go to the dance? And some of the stuff you buy ahead of time to get ready for the dance, and is there a communicate, I mean, it's just all of that. And how well is it communicated, and early enough, and?
I can speak last year. This, this code of conduct is put on all the students as an icon. The high school staff, particularly Mr. Bordeaux at the time, calls each grade level down at the high school to go over the student code of conduct with them. And so at that initial phase, it is, at least start. It may not sink in or register with a student, 'cause it's not applicable at that time for them. The piece that we need to do a better job as, as an organization are our new students that come in after that, that session. To make sure they get a, a hard copy of the student code of conduct, so that there is, at least the expectations are identified.
It's not a process like athletics where every Monday there's a list?
Yeah, I don't think so.
This, I don't know the, the process. There should be one, and that will be when I, when I, upon approval, this will be something I go over with the administrator, here's now the expectation. 'Cause I did, have not done that with them, but I, I mean, they, most of them knew about this, but like, we have some new people. With, with Chris at the high school, and then the two tonight, that we're gonna need to go over this as a group, and saying, this is now the expectation.
Well, I would challenge, like, right after two days before, how do, how do you find out? I would hope there's a, a cutoff point that's more than two days, because if you are investing that kinda money, and you find out two days before that you can't go, and you've already ordered everything, I think there should be a cutoff little further out, more notice. I don't know if that's in that policy anywhere, but it seems a little harsh to say two days before, oh, sorry, yeah, you can't go.
But then just also the, the social aspect of high school is true, and it's true about middle school. And I get that we're here for the academic piece and all of that. But there could possibly be connections made at a dance with a kid who's struggling, with a kid who doesn't think there are any friends, that would change things for that kid. And so does this policy eliminate that to happen for that kid? I don't know. I just, I just say it and put it out, I guess.
I made a note to look at that one. If I need to send a revised line to you for the next board meeting, here's kind of almost what we did with the food service two years ago. When I continue on page, nothing on forty-three, forty-four. We are required to report fratruency unless there's a extenuating circumstance, you know, of a, that we know of. So it just clarifies that language. On page forty-five. This was a unilateral decision on my part in terms of having parents wait a minimum of three days before requesting makeup work. To me, if a parent's proactive, why are we preventing them from getting the work? I think it, it doesn't promote, I personally believe, this is my change on this one. If a parent calls and wants to work, let's, let's get them the work. The returns to high schools are determined, or is determined by the principal, does any makeup work? Because they may, there may be a situation where you may have to schedule something that doesn't fit into the normal schedule, after school, before school, during a lunch, during a prep, and so forth. Forty-six and forty, forty-seven. This was added the year, number twelve on page forty-seven was added the year that I started. I think the policy in the very first paragraph says if someone's wearing something that's inappropriate, it could be a violation of the dress code. Dress code is one that is very subjective, and it can be even on the day, depending on the days. Although we try to be consistent, part of this is getting the staff ownership so that, you know, if students violated the dress code, we aren't bringing it to the student's attention, the parents are at the fifth hour. It should've been identified first hour, and so, or whenever that student starts school, if they're at the AIS program, et cetera. Twelve seems to be the most problematic. My recommendation would be remove it, keep the, the others. If the outfit is inappropriate, then we address it individually with that student and that parent. This has been, if all, any calls on the, on the dress code has been this one because of some.
It's become standard apparel.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so.
And, and then the, the second part of that is, is the covering, depending on the type of shirt. I mean, you know, you could, there's many ways to bend this dress code to fit. And so I'm trying to eliminate this, and, you know, ultimately, we want kids to wear appropriate clothing to school. You're here for a learning environment. And we may add this one in a, in a year, six months from now, or even this month, when you're looking at what's out for back-to-school clothing, there may be another item that we address here, so.
So we're saying no stretch pants? Is that what we're saying, or we're saying?
We're saying they can.
Just, there's appropriate clothing.
Gotcha, okay. It's become something that is too hard to manage. Yeah. You know? It sounds like it, on some levels.
All right, can I ask the question? And I am the one that asked the question about prom. I guess I don't get, you got a dress code for during the school day, can't be inappropriate, but you sure as heck can at the prom or the homecoming. So I just look at, why have a dress code at all? 'Cause you got a dress code during the day, but you can dress really inappropriately to a dance. How is that different? I don't get it. And I know the answer was, we don't have a dress code for dances when I asked about prom, correct? So I guess I just wanna know, why, why do we, why is it such a big deal to have a dress code during the school day? You gotta be appropriate, but when you go to a dance, you don't have to be.
Well, I guess I, I would take the position that we should have the dress code for those, because ultimately, any school function, this falls under. So I guess what we need to, I need to work with my team on is how to make sure that those students, whether selecting dresses or outfits, whatever it is, know that it needs to fall within the dress code of the, it is a school function.
Well, I think the, you know, the big picture of dress code always, when we think about kids. I mean, if, if, if our, you know, if you go back to, to our mission statement, you know, about thinking, having kids in a global community, we're working toward kids, helping them understand professional versus something else. I mean, that's part of our learning process at the high school level, for sure, that we're getting more serious about, you know, in that way. And so to have that conversation geared toward that, it's a part of the educational process of learning. I know that's hard. I know it's crazy difficult, 'cause I get it. But I think it belittles this document if it's not consistently talked about before those major times. So it, it takes away some of the, the, the policy, and being able to uphold the policy if you just let whatever happen on those particular evenings, I think.
Well, I think, but the parents are so, I mean, I think it falls on the parents. They're okay with it for that one night, which, right or wrong, you can have your opinion on. But that's where you're gonna get the, the parents will say, well, I don't have a problem with it, so.
Well, and if you look at.
About the whole thing?
Well, when you look at the trends, I mean, we're talking about yoga pants aren't as much as maybe we've tried to fight it, they're just now a standard. You look at the dresses that they're wearing, I mean, if you look at the no halter tops, no midriff revealing, that's, that's a lot of the dresses nowadays. They're the two pieces, little midriff showing, or strapless, I mean, all of those would be not acceptable then. I don't, I mean, that cuts out a lot of stuff. So for one night, if someone wears a tank top style dress, I, I don't have a problem with that. I don't think a tank top to a, to a formal event, like a, you know, I don't think that's a problem. Even the midriff revealing ones, there's like this much that is.
Really? Really? How many dresses did you get a good look at?
I got, I got a lot of them.
I'm just gonna be, I, I don't disagree with part of what you're saying. But I wholly disagree with, and I won't use the, the word that is on the tip of my tongue, 'cause the TV cameras are on. But there's no way, if, why have a dress code during the day that says, but at night, they can do whatever they want, it's still a dance? Don't have a dress code at all. Let kids, let kids wear whatever they want, and let the parents, say, there, there has to be.
I would say that the difference is, is that when you're, have the dress code for during the school day, you're here to learn.
Yes.
And, and the prom or the dances are a social thing, not a learning atmosphere, I guess. That would be my only input I would have on it, you know?
Yeah, I would support that.
You know, I'm with Kyle, and it falls on the parents, you know? If the parents wanna let their child walk out the door.
Dressed like that?
Dressed like that, then so be it.
I think it is a huge, I think it is a huge battle to undertake. And so you have to, I guess, decide if it's a battle that, that the district wants to, the high school wants to undertake, because it is, it's not just students that you're gonna get the kickback from. It is gonna be parents as well, right? Who are gonna sort of put their hands up and say, but we can only find, fill in the blank, you know?
I just think we should be, be careful in the battles that we pick as far as the dress code goes, and, and the dance one is not one that I particularly wanna fight. Fifty girls, you mean?
Well, you don't kick 'em out. They buy a different dress. I'm just saying, if I were a teenager right now, I would be fighting this Board of Education about not having any dress code policy at all. 'Cause if I can wear what I want to the dance, why can't I wear what I want to school? That's all I'm saying. It doesn't, to me, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work.
I'm not sure.
My, my answer to that is, you're at school to learn, not a fashion show. You know, dances very much are a fashion show.
Well, if it's hot, I wanna wear a halter top.
You're here for it.
To school. I can't, I can't learn with a halter top on?
Well, and my thought would be if people.
Not distract little Jenny, the thirteen, old boy.
But it doesn't distract him at the dance.
That actually is little Jenny's problem. That's not the girl's problem.
Exactly.
Um, but I, I think that.
I, I.
What, or, is, is the dress code, does the dress code go into football games? Does the dress code travel to basketball games? Does the dress code travel in that sense?
I don't know if it does or not, but I would say, no, it doesn't, in practice, past practice.
Because it seems like those are extracurricular things outside of the learning structure day. And so whatever happens at those, what would happen at a dance, right? That, that's the time when it needs to be consistent, in, in some ways, I guess.
I can, I, I would be shocked if anybody in a dress code got kicked out of a football game or a basketball game for.
'Cause there are bigger things to think about.
Unless it's a violent, or a blatant inappropriate shirt that was worn.
Right.
That, that would, but I.
'Cause I think there are just other bigger things to think about when you're. Crowd control at a football game, you know?
I'd just be interested to know, just, Brian, back of your head, how many schools have dress code policies for their dances? And what are they, and how do they, how do they?
Implement them?
Enforce them, yeah.
Well, and you, you do some fascinating things.
'Cause I bet there's a lot.
Through social media, at that time of year, just being connected with different schools and seeing group pictures from different schools, there does seem to be a different tenor with some high school with dresses that I saw. And that, there seems to be, they, they knew that they couldn't wear anything that showed a midriff. They knew, you know, I mean, I mean, it just seemed like there was that in, in other, from other schools, so that would be fascinating, I think. Anything about?
Page forty-eight talks about the suspension of the school. Typically, the dean of student is the one that is the initial, that's why it was changed from principal. The appeal then goes to a principal. Referencing ten school days rather than ten days, just a clarifying. It also clarifies on a practice that we've done, the communication, if there is a long-term suspension, more than ten days, or expulsion, that information comes out of our office, so that we have consistency on page forty-eight on that one. Forty-nine, there were no changes. Fifty, no changes. Fifty-one. Saturday school option, we've been utilizing the, either after school or during the in-school, at the high school particularly, that alternative education room, if we've had to use it. We haven't been able to find staff on Saturday schools. Finding staff to get in the building has been very challenging. That's why that was removed and more of an after-school, or a suspension was placed in there. Page, the bottom, page fifty-one, and then the top of page fifty-two talks about the progressive discipline, which is part of the board policy that we have a progressive discipline pros, um, policy. Basically goes three, five, seven, nine, and then anything outside of the nine. In this particular case, talks about someone who's on a, this is the behavior plan on this one. Five, our student can be on a probation or academic contract, and that's the progression plan for there. On page fifty-three, it's the progression plan for formal discipline. That defines short-term, long-term, and expulsions. Again, if you're at step five, because there's been five offenses, we're now bringing the board a recommendation either for a long-term or expulsion. Page fifty-four, clarifying that it's, and this, this was mine added, not part of the administrative, that within one day, that student, that parent has received the suspension note. Sometimes it can happen at the end of the day, and they're having time to fill out or fill out the form, but by the next day, that parent should have some type of communication of why that student has been suspended. If, fifty-four is, talks about the appeal process to the superintendent. This does, though, anything less than ten days for a discipline area, a disciplinary action is not appealable to the board. I have not had any appeals, just as a practice for the two years, for suspension that's been under ten days, so a three or five day. But it just clarifies, in looking at other districts handbook, that's typically the, the, that ten-day mark is the sign where it can come to a board, because you're gonna be looking at more of a long-term or, or a, a peel of that process. Clarifying on page fifty-four that the dean of students or principal shall prevent their findings to, of the investigation, what happened to the Board of Education. Ultimately, that is with the Board of Education, that decision, that long-term. Fifty-five talks about just some clarification languages, lockers, costs. This has not been an issue, but when I ballpark the cost of actually the time for ordering locks and so forth, it's more than five dollars, with all the people involved to process it, the actual cost of a lock may be five dollars and so forth, but, so that price goes up. We, that's typically not an issue. We do have some that we do have to replace costs for locks. We added laptops and computers to the language on page fifty-five. The rest of the document.
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Fifty-six.
Fifty, page fifty-six.
Yeah, at the top, we're talking about extracurricular activity, including athletics, you have to be in attendance for the full school day. Am I thinking, wasn't there some thing, you had to be here so many hours of the day? Like, I don't know if I'm being, it's an MHSAA thing or something like that? Or is it, you have, so like, if you're not in school today, you can't play in the football game tonight?
Unless there's an excused absence, that the parent called the absence in. If it's an unexcused absence, it would not be, you're not allowed to play in that game.
Just because it says. That you have to be there. It doesn't talk about excused or unexcused?
It says verify, well, who would normally receive a verified absence. So we're allowed to participate in activity with a code, the principal does.
And that's that.
Verified means.
And that's that, that's it.
Verified means excused.
Verified is excused. It's, we're not necessarily excusing, we just, we verify that a parent or someone is saying, "Yes, that child is out," and that's the purpose.
To describe an absence versus verify? Do you know what I mean? Just to make that language clear?
Because to be verified means, yeah, Joey was absent. Excuse means somebody called in for him.
I don't know, I just wonder if it's confusing.
I'm hesitant, because I'm trying to think where this would else, where else in any document this would be referenced to.
When you take attendance in Power School, are they, are they marked excused/unexcused, or is there a verified? Isn't it just excused/un-
Verified, verified and unverified, I think are the two options that-
Verified is instead of excused?
And verified is an excuse dance.
Okay.
Up through page sixty, zones which we just clarified to identify, it's kind of a wording, didn't flow with, will identify where and when students are allowed to use their wireless communication devices. And then as you keep going through, there's no other changes. Up and through page sixty-six, again, it's a, "Our students shall not attend extracurricular or suspended from school." Just more of a wordsmith. Party policy, just identifies thirty minutes after, this was adjusted last year. The times are the same, it's just adding the words thirty and tend to be consistent. Bottom, page sixty-seven, clarifying that Saturday school, going to after-school or in-school suspension. Page sixty-eight, changing buses is really the coordinator of transportation, and a lot of it has to do with, do we have room on the buses for students to switch routes? And it's primarily been the transportation coordinator, so just clarifying that. Sixty-nine, again, goes to a progressive discipline for bus behaviors. Warning, three days of lost bus bridges, six, rather than leaving at discretion of one to three, and being somewhat inconsistent, a potential of being inconsistent, to be consistent. And then seventy's just a change from will to shall.
Okay. So then this is like a first reading, if you will, right?
First reading. There's a couple that I will send you, that's some clarifying language I wrote notes on.
Okay.
To see if that's-
Next, Student Athletic Code of Conduct, ten book.
This one, other than name changes, year changes, as you go through it, there are only, the only change that we're recommending is a clarification on page seven. We actually had this happen this year, it was a senior student, fourth card marking was ineligible to play, but semester exams was eligible to play, so the language didn't speak to when seniors are done with school and sports continue. So this is clarifying for the time period that a senior's last day of school, from, between a senior's last day of school and the end of the sports season, which includes any postseason tournaments, eligibility shall be the second semester's final grade. If those are not available, then we use the fourth card marking grades. If those aren't available, then we use whatever grades are in Power School at that point, like an eligibility check, similar to the others. And it could be just a timing issue, but this did happen this year, that we had to kind of work through the policy, and I don't see it as an issue, but it clarifies so that it can't be somewhat subjective on an individual. The student did end up having to play because the semester grades qualified that person for.
So that's really the only change with this?
That, in this one, yes, we did a, many changes, the, it would have been, I think it was December of my first year in fourteen, we did a lot of revisiting of this. Some of the forms, we just attached the current physical examination, the concussion form that's the state, but really, the rest is just date changes.
What do we, what do we do with sports that have their own code of conduct, specific to their sport? How does that work?
In here, it references, and I will find it, that they- That a coach can establish, you know, criteria, as long as it's communicated ahead of time to the students, which could be more than, than this one, they may have a higher standard that they want. I'm just trying to find it here.
This is page thirteen, supplemental rules and regulations.
Supplemental rules, you can be given upon approval of the designated, which would be the dean of students. These must be writings submitted to the, prior to the start of the season, yes, so that it can't be something that halfway through the season, okay, now we're gonna implement. It's gotta be communicated upfront. Thank you, I knew it was in there somewhere.
Okay. Moving on. ILOS, zero-one-four-zero, conflict of interest.
Many of the upcoming policy revisions that are gonna be before you are recommendations through NEOLA, either through federal clarification or state guidance. The only change on the zero-one-four-zero is on page ten. It just, this particular one applies to board members. Original policy, you're not supposed to solicit or accept gratuities and favors, any monetary value from contractors or parties, that involve FEDO grants, the amount, et cetera. The recommendation is that regardless of whether it's FEDO grants or whether it's something else, we should not be accepting gratuities and favors. It does give a cap of a fifty-six dollar, which, you go to a conference, you get something free, you know, a couple of mug like this, you are allowed to do that. And that you're gonna see in other policies for administrators and staff.
Okay.
And that if there is, that a board member should disclose this to the full board. That is the only change in zero-one-four-zero.
Eleven-thirty?
Eleven-thirty, talks about conflict of interest. There's gonna be several policies regarding conflict of interest, some are for administrators, some are for support staff. It clarifies, school district board members, employees, officers, agents, someone who's acting on behalf of the district, might be a contracted service personnel. It adds that language in here, officers and agents throughout it.
So-
It also talks about, I'm sorry.
No, so, that, when I, this is talked about administration, so when you get to the other ones, it's the same kind of-
It's the same kinds of, but it's the other groups.
Okay.
One thousand, administration, I think, three thousand, support staff, et cetera. The one thing it does add, though, which is, if you have a employment relationship or a professional relationship, and I guess the easiest example might be if, I have a consultant that, I don't know, that I know, and we might be professional friends with, that, I don't know, sells, sells something, whatever that is. Even though they're not in an employment relationship, it needs to be disclosed about what that professional connection is, so that people are aware. And when we hired Mr. Manguni, one of the things I did report was, I used to work with Mr. Manguni in Moore. We had a professional relationship, and so that needed to be made aware of, so that there's no bias or perceived bias that you're implying favoritism. The other part on page three talks about, I forgot my, disclosing that conflict of interest in a timely manner. If an administration does have it, it does leave subject to disciplinary action up to including termination, as permitted by whatever board policy is for reducing or terminating staff. It references the, again, the, I jumped ahead, I'm sorry.
You did?
Oh, eleven-thirty, I'm sorry, eleven-thirty.
Yep.
Again, it references that nominal value of acceptance from contract. It speaks specifically to FEDO grants. In the beginning, talks about all, you can't accept it, and this was really speaking to, in addition, FEDO grants apply the same way.
Twelve-forty?
Twelve-forty. Evaluation of superintendent, this is in, November fifth, the legislature's passed the revised FOLCO, we've been applying it, but it says in fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen, twenty-five percent of the evaluation has to be based on student growth and assessment data. Beginning in eighteen, nineteen, forty percent. You're gonna see this again when we talk about administrators and teachers, similar concept. There's some language clarification for the superintendent, there really is no promotion for me, so on the bottom, page one, you're either retaining or developing or coaching. It talks about the year-end evaluation, that the district has to implement one or, has to implement an evaluation tool. Teachers, we use Charlotte Danielson's. It gives us the option that we can create our own, but we have to provide that documentation. We don't do that. Beginning of the sixteen-seventeen school year, it has to be posted, I'm on, letter G has to be posted on the website. Again, this stuff's gonna be repeated in other policies, so I won't go over it again.
The form?
The form, the process, everything has to be outlined on the website. There are two links, we're currently on the website right now, one is for teacher, one is for administrator. There's nothing on there yet, because I want to mention the policy, because we have to attach the policy to the website. We have to outline how the evaluation process will happen.
Hey, Brian, I just see a typo.
I do that to the staff in the fall, here's your expectation. That communication will now be on the website for anybody to see. I'm sorry, Jake.
I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna, I just see a typo, I just, page three of that one, down toward the bottom, H, number one, yeah, did you catch that too? Okay. Good. Yeah.
Yep.
And this, and our, our evaluation tool for the superintendent is good, correct?
Your evaluation tool is one of the tools that is on the state website.
All we have to do is the training.
The training piece, yes. And just like I have to go through the training for the administrators, the administrators will have to confirm, and we've got that lineup, that they've gone through the training for the teacher.
Meaning, we're all gonna have to go through, there's a thing, I think I do it first, or however it goes, but we're all gonna have to have the training on evaluating the superintendent, and then that goes on the website, too, that we have been trained and-
I can speak from the last superintendent's meeting, I attended, that the recommendation was through the county school board association, to try to arrange something through that, so, because every school board is gonna be in the same situation.
Everybody has to do it, so they're looking to make it easier by doing it like that, so that we can do it.
And what happens if there's a board member that doesn't go through the training? Do we know?
My thought was, based on everything that's been mailed to me, if you don't do the training, can't do the evaluation, correct? I mean, that's how I'm looking at it, because it talks about, I'm getting stuff as president of the board telling you, okay, boom, 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 and then this is what your board members, and then talking about, it's gotta go on your website, and that you are duly trained to conduct the evaluation, so that's what I would think, but I guess, I guess we'll find out.
I would see a specific idea, that is the conversation that's happening.
Yeah, it's just, I'm reading it, that's what I think it's saying, but-
Otherwise, that's it for twelve-forty.
Okay, fourteen-twenty.
Fourteen-twenty is almost identical to twelve-forty, but this deals with the school administrator's evaluation. It talks about for building-level administrators, again, the same percentages, we use student growth. It has to be one of the tools on the MDE's approved list, the administrator's evaluation that we're currently using is one of those approved lists that is on the list.
So that one's all set?
That one's all set, so now we're gonna start, I've gotta upload that stuff to the website for compliance, so all of this is identical to the teacher. The administrators have to be trained in the teacher evaluation, have to have some type of certification, certificate that they have completed the evaluation training for that tool. And that's it for that one.
Twenty-six, twenty-three, student assessment.
Student, this updates from the MEEP to the M-Step assessment. It takes out any reference to ACT, and references, again, M-Step and SAT, current ACT work keys is what we currently use. Just updates the current policy.
And I guess, just, because I think, wow, this is your first time of going through all this, right? These, these ones that come through, and at the end, the MCL, that's all, so that's law, that stuff, we don't really have a choice to say, no, I don't want that paragraph or something, okay? It's pretty much telling us, here's what you're doing, so just, just so you know that part, that we really don't get a lot of say.
Yeah, no say.
But we have to go through the process, yes.
Thirty-one-ten, that's a conflict of interest for professional staff, which would be really your teachers, administrators in that group. Again, it's almost identical, just referencing that group as the administrator and the board.
Thirty-one-thirty-one?
Thirty-one-thirty-one, talks about staff recall and reductions. Everything on this has been the same, except for this language. The law does require us to, we cannot retain or recall a teacher that has a minimally or ineffective evaluation over a teacher that has an effective or highly effective evaluation. And so that's what that statement is referring to. And we have to lay off, if we were in a layoff mode, teachers with a less effective rating first. It's gonna get into some, because you could have a situation where, let's say, we have a hypothetically, a band teacher that's got a minimally effective, but I still need three band teachers, and I don't need as many classroom teachers. I could have that person, because I don't have anybody else to teach that, certification-wise, in that case. But if there was a classroom teacher that has a band or music certification, then I could lay off that minimally and move that one over. That's what that's saying.
So Brian, the policy, the language still includes the teacher's tenure act? That act still exists, but it's kind of null and void, right? Does the act still exist even?
It's, it's in, it's twelve-forty-eight and twelve-forty-nine are the two laws that basically repeal parts of the tenure act when it comes to evaluation.
So the, the act remains?
The act, there is still, yes, correct.
Because they still get tenure?
Correct. The act still remains, yeah.
So we still grant teachers tenure after-
Right?
Four-
Four years?
Four years.
Actually, I think it's five years now. The act changed to five years, after the fifth year, you grant tenure.
Did we ever see that? Does that happen early? Or you said not?
I don't think we've had anybody in the last-
Haven't had anybody do it? I mean, new teacher to make that happen?
We might be getting close on a couple that would have been hired prior to, I'm just thinking of Ashley Gibson off the top of my head. She might be getting close on that one.
So I'm just gonna have to look at what's left of the act, because I guess I don't understand why it exists when so much of it isn't.
Applicable anymore, because they've ripped it out.
There's still being tenure.
Okay.
Thirty-two-twenty?
This deals with professional staff, the evaluation, teachers, again, it's the same thing as the administrators, in my evaluation, the percentages from the state are there, the student growth factor. This is a little different in terms of, we have to use three years of student data, or three years isn't available, as much data as we have to make that decision. That's on page two of six on that one. The law now outlines that you have to have, beginning this school year, you only have, you have to have at least one observation that is unscheduled. you have to have at least one observation that is unscheduled. The administrator responsible for performing the evaluation and who's been trained has to complete that observation. You can have others conduct the observations, so theoretically, if all the administrators have been trained in evaluation, Ms. Michon could do observations at the middle school, elementary school, and vice versa, because they've all been trained how to use the instrument. So that's what that's referencing. Shirley Metaszewski, with Director of Special Ed, could do observations for special ed staff in addition to the principal. And so the law allows multiple observers who have been trained in the instrument to use that information on the final evaluation. And it just says, within 30 days of the observation, the teacher's going to get some type of This talks about posting requirements. On page five, talks about a non-provocationary teacher, if they're ineffective, after you, this one could be, this one potentially could be challenged. If you've got an ineffective teacher that a student will have had for two consecutive years, you have to notify, because you might not be in a layoff mode. As an organization, we might not, and we may have a teacher who, we don't hypothetically, is in an ineffective mode. Well, in that process, we're putting them on a plan and working with them to improve. If a student has that teacher for two consecutive years, the law requires us to notify the parents that that child is being taught by an ineffective teacher.
Only if they have the student two years ago?
Two consecutive years. And you have certain dates at the law, July 15th is the date. So that's a little different in the teachers versus others, because that's not part of the law.
4110.
410, it's a conflict of interest, that's identical to the support sta, what we talked about earlier, but this deals with support staff.
6110, grant funds.
Grant funds, talks about internal controls. I can say, we have these in place. You know, this is just more of the guidance that is in a policy, that these are the, how we utilize grant funds are based on the conditions of the grant, that comply with the grant. This, this is just more of an updating our current policy to be in compliance with current legisl, or current regulations. We are following this, and we, we have, that's not an issue for us.
6111, internal controls.
6111, excuse me. Hang on, I'm sorry, I think I, I apologize. What I just explained was 6111, the internal control. The grant funds, I apologize, just basically says, we're going to apply those internal controls, and that we're, we're following the process for paying out the grant fund that's in compliance with the grant, as well as how we reimburse. So for instance, if we send a staff member to a conference, and we pay it out of general fund, and we have it out of the federal fund, we're following the same policy as long as it's complying with the federal grant. That's what that 6110 is about. And then it references the internal controls. And then when you get to 6111, that internal controls is what I was just referencing. My apologies.
6112, cash management.
Cash management of grant, this is a new policy recommended. In a nutshell, if you're given a grant where they give you the money upfront, this policy applies to that. All of our grants, we don't get the money upfront, we use the expended out of general fund, and then we request the reimbursement through Title I and through that, that process. Some grants, they'll give you the money upfront, and then you implement the grant, and then you do all your reporting afterwards. That's what this is applying. There was not a policy regarding cash management of grants.
Is that like, when a teacher applies for a grant for something, because they, you get the money upfront?
If they were applying on behalf of the district, and the district was awarded that grant, and I think there's a $500, anything under, if they were, if the teacher was applying on behalf of Richmond Community Schools, and we got the grant, but they're, if they applied a target for their own grant, that's, that's there to administer to the grant.
Right, but when you say, when you get the money upfront, when a teacher applies for a grant, like, for instance, the one that Mrs. Durst did for DTE, for the Legos.
The Legos.
You got that money upfront, so that's what this, when you get that.
Correct.
It's making sure that you got that money, and you do what you're supposed to do with that.
Correct, and then you report at the end of that grant how you spent the money. It also references, if you put that money in an interest-bearing account, how you account for those, we don't, we don't get that many grants that have interest, that we're at that point, but.
6114, cost principles spending federal funds.
This is a new policy. Give me a second, I've got to get my notes on this one. There's some security and exchange and guidance that are now required. The U.S. Security and Exchange Commission, as well as disclosed, this policy is a result of that. So basically, what this is, is looking at how we spend and the proper documentation and the performance of that, of that grant for federal funds. It's a policy that didn't exist in ours, that we need to have based on the federal guidelines. It's identical, it's somewhat, I don't want to say cookie cutter, that Neola takes right from the federal guidance here for us to apply. It references, you know, when you talk about timely obligations of the fund, that you're following the guidelines, or that you only charge things to that grant that fall within that timeframe, the performance, et cetera, on it.
6116, having effort reporting.
This is a new policy. It's basically, you're, what you charge to the grant for salaries and personnel, that you're keeping the, the time and the documentation of what was done, that it does apply to the grant, and it's, you keep that document. We do it now with our Title I aides, they fill out a, it's called a PAR, I'm drawing a blank on what the PAR, Personnel Activities Report, which is one of Vicky's favorite documents to, to deal with. That basically said, if you're paid out a grant, this is what you did during that time on the grant. This was approved, the policy, the previous year, or previous, in, last year. It was a new policy, I think at that point last, and the only change on page three, that allows for myself to enter into a contract with a third party who's assisting the district for compliance. For instance, with the Obamacare, or the, not Obamacare, the Affordable Care Act, apologize, the new guidance, we contract with SETSEG to help us get in compliance with that guideline. So it allows me to enter into that contract for compliance. This talks about if procurement, if you're using federal grant dollars to purchase things, on the second page, it talks about you, the, how you draft the contract or the specifications of the bid has to be very objective and cannot be, you're not supposed to use other vendors to help you with that, drafting that. The idea is, I'm going to draft this bid, so I'm the only one that can bid on it, so when it goes out to bid, my company can bid on it then. That can be problematic, and I guess the, and that's why we added the language, unless the superintendent requires consultation for the bid, because, and I'll just speak to the sound system. We contracted a company to come in, and, not contract, we consulted, we didn't pay any dollar. Here's the sound system, here's someone who's an expert in that field to give us the specs that we need for the sound system. I don't have that background, and though our music teachers may, they may not to that level. That company technically could not bid on the project, the way it was written prior to that handwritten language by, unless the superintendent. They did bid on it, they were not awarded, they were not the lowest bid, but we used pretty much their specs in how we crafted the bid. So I added the language, unless there's a consultation is needed, because there are certain things that I have, do not have the expertise, that I'm going to need someone to write up for me on the details. And then annually, we put them on a list, that they're, they're on this bid list, if you will.
Brian, this is only, this is 10 pages, but mine is only nine of 10. I don't have page 10. Does everybody else have?
Page 10.
I noticed that, too. I didn't see.
All right, let me, page 10, the original one from Neola, and I can get you copies if I'll send it to you. It talks about bid protest. If someone is protesting the way the bids were done, there's a process, they have 72 hours. This was approved in a previous policy. There's no changes to this one. And then maintenance of procure, how long we have to keep the record. So I will scan this one and send it to you. See, you have a copy of that last page. I don't know why I didn't pick up.
6424, purchasing cards.
This is a new policy. We do have purchasing cards in the district, but there has been no policy for how those are utilized. So if a certain, a specific item is less than $5,000, it can be applied to the purchasing card. The business manager in this case does the review. We set up the limits on, on staff members that utilize purchasing cards, but this now provides some guidance for using a purchaser. Basically, a district credit card is what that is. The only difference in this policy from what was previously is this talks about if we were reimbursing for airfare, kind of how the guidelines for that typically, at least in two years I've been, I don't think we've ever reimbursed for airfare for a conference, but if it ever came up a situation, we'd have some guidelines for that commercial airfare. And then it references how you reimburse it with the federal funds if it's coming, paid out of grant dollars.
7217, weapons.
7217, there's a couple of weapons one here. It just adds other, I know this was a, kind of a hot topic the last time, because it potentially could be challenged in court, but adds other people who are allowed to carry a weapon, based on the guidance that we've received from, in this case, the state. Court officers, parole, probation, or correctional officers, you know, Department of Corrections, people who are out to, to capture a fugitive, et cetera.
That's while they're in that role?
While they're in that role, yes. Thank you. 7300. The next two deal with getting rid of property. The only clarification is, we don't have a board finance committee, so I put the superintendent in there, but all the documents in getting rid of a property or disposing of a property come to the board for consideration, to the panel of seven.
So there's two 7300s then?
No, the next one should be 7310, which is disposing of surplus properties. This would be.
I have two, and they're different. I have two 7300s, it's a disposition of real property, and they're completely different. Huh?
There are 73.
Uh huh.
You might have.
Which one, should I have a page that's got a whole bunch of this on it?
Yes.
Or this?
This.
So this one is, they go.
This is your, this is the disposition of surplus property. I don't know why you know the 7310. Okay. This outlines, it revises the policy of how we get rid of surplus property, extra desks, chairs, et cetera, particularly in how, if it's federally funded, if it was purchased with federal dollars. You know, if it's, if it's like, hypothetically, a smart board was purchased out of Title I grants, and we want to get rid of it, it talks about the procedures, how we, we get rid of it, if it's a federally funded item.
7310, disposition of surplus property. That's what you were just talking about?
That's the one I was getting, yes. That's my problem.
7450.
7450, property inventory. This basically talks about, we inventory property that is, has a value of over $5,000, and it talks about that process. It addresses at the bottom there, if the, if the items for federally awarded, stuff that was purchased out of federal grants, how we inventory that stuff. We don't have very much that's over $5,000, that's, that's a single item purchase. Talks about the, what we have to record, and then every so many years, we have to do an updated inventory of that federal, so we have a current list.
814201, weapons.
This one is almost, this is identical to the other weapons policies we approved with the, this deals within the operations or part of the organization. All the language is identical to the other, but just falls under that, that operations section, 8,000 of the board policy. In this one, I'm not recommending, like I did the other ones, I don't think, I do not want to be the position to give permission to you and not you, it's just, weapons are not, our position is, we don't want weapons on school property. And then it's saying some exceptions, like for instance, law enforcement personnel, if they're going to bring in like a weapon from World War II, as long as it's under the supervision of the prince, been approved by the principal, theatrical devices, starter pistols for athletic events, and so forth.
8500, food service.
8500, food service. The only difference is with their, now requiring in our policy that we add that we do not discriminate based on the standard language for nondiscrimination and equal access to equal opportunity. It also talks about the bad debt that has occurred cannot be charged to the food service, so that $1,900, like previous, whatever we don't collect has to get charged to the general fund as an expense. And then it talks about the maintenance of equipment, and employees whose salaries are paid out of the, the federal governments have to, their time has to be accounted. And that's primarily, that letter I is for those employees that might be split between two positions. Maybe they work in food service, and they work in custodial services. The time they're in food service has to be accounted for that percentage, can only be charged to food service. And that is it.
Thank you. Now, in two weeks, we will do this as a second reading and approve all of these, and we'll go much quicker.
We are all caught up with all the updates for Neola.
Oh, good.
Hold on.
Okay. Next, items of interest for members of the board. Does anybody have anything?
Had a chance to stop by the Lions camp last week. Looked like it was a great opportunity for kids in our community, and everybody was having a good time.
What was that?
The Lions, the football Lions camp, Detroit Lions.
Herman Moore was here. That's the only person I saw.
Yes. There was another, there was more, but Herman would be the one that most people would know. Good old number 84.
Anybody else? Okay, next, our action items. IDN hardware. Brian?
This is the final phase in rekeying, re-coring the district, the exterior and interior. It's now the interior of the middle school. This was originally supposed to be brought to the board in June. It was my, with putting the whole budget together, it was an oversight on my part. It was part of the budget from the bond perspective, that we were going to rekey the middle school. We've completed the elementary, we've completed the high school, interior and exterior, those two buildings. We've done the exterior at the middle school, now it's the interior. In addition to this, there's a couple recores that does the athletic complex, the concession stands, and transportation, so then the district will be completely on a new system, a key system.
Excellent.
And then you'll see two cost proposals on your back. As we went and we walked each door to see what type of key it needed, there were several repairs, locks that were broken or cores that needed, so there, you'll see a second proposal for about $2,000 to fix all of those, so the total cost is encompassing both of those.
There's a sample resolution?
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the recording of the school lock system by IDN hardware for an amount not to exceed $19,500, for which funding from the 2013 voter-approved bond is authorized.
Support. Okay. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, other than, this will be so nice that this is? Is there any discussion other than this will be so nice that this is all done? Everything is completely done and that'll be great. I'm going to do a roll call. Kyle?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, Hendrick Construction payment approval.
At a previous board meeting, I brought to the board, let me back up. At a board meeting that we had Hendrick Construction, Dickerson Mechanical and some other, I think French's associates was here, there was a conversation and a direction given to me not to pay Hendricks until everything was done and completed. Fast forward a couple months later, I can't remember the exact day, I want to say, earlier this year, I want to say it was January, if my memory serves me correctly, January 25th, I put together a recommendation to pay Dickerson, pay several of the vendors that had yet, we were holding their last payments for. Everything was approved except Hendrick because there were still some outstanding issues on the bond work. Hendricks and I met, we, they completed all the punchless items on the bond work. The only item that I want to say is not, from Hendrick's perspective, they have completed what services we contracted them for. There still is an issue with the science windows in the new addition. The company that has put the windows in is out of business. So we are in the process of filing a claim against their insurance to get it fixed. In essence, the, this is the window, it's supposed to be tilted the flashing away from so the water runs away. There's a slight angle so the water can sit and eventually can get in the building and have the problem. The tile's been fixed in there, it's been sealed, but in talking with our attorney, he believes it's not, Hendrick has done their obligation. So now we're going an alternate route because each of our contracts, we had to have an insurance policy to file a claim against the insurance company to get it fixed. Whether we contract, hire someone to come in and fix it and then we submit the bill to the insurance, that process I don't know yet, but it will be fixed. I don't want it to be, because I'll be back here in a year with the same problem if we don't get it fixed. So the recommendation, our final, our payment, excuse me, that we owe for Hendricks at this point is $42,011. We, again, we've been making a series of payments based on the contract that was entered into, I want to say, January of 14. And so we held that last payment until the punches. So.
What's that amount?
$42,011 at the time. When I uploaded or had this today to bring, I didn't have that. Vicki and I were finalizing the numbers and making sure that we had every, all the dollars accounted for. So $42,001. So I'm requesting that the board authorize me to make the payment. They have requested, they've made three in the last month, maybe two months, three requests to have their final payment submitted. And I did explain to them, we didn't have board meetings in July and I had, would have to take it to the board for action on this.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent in consultation with Trune Law Firm, PC, and authorize the superintendent to issue payment to R.C. Hendrick &amp; Sons, Inc., for the amount owed. Payment shall be in accordance with the contractual obligations previously approved by the Board of Education for which funding from the 2013 voter-approved bond is authorized.
Before anyone supports that, Tracy, would you just say the dollar amount?
Sure. It's $42,011?
Yep.
$42,011, that's.
Support. Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Will this make us done with that?
In terms of project work, I mean, we're pretty much done with every contract at this point. On a side note, the insurance claims that we have made, they have now, there's pending litigation from our insurance company to get their money back. And if they are successful, then we will get our deductibles that we paid and some of our out-of-pocket returned for that peating, cooling and so forth. And then the middle school freezer isn't yet in litigation, but it's heading down that way. But that's done through our insurance company and there'll be no new cost to us.
So we are. I think this makes us officially done.
There would be no reason that I would have to contact them to come out to work or do anything with the district. Now we're dealing with just the warranties where I deal directly with the company, so.
Okay. That is good to hear. Okay. It's been moved and supported. I'm going to do a roll call. Tracy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And that motion carries. Next, I need a motion to go into closed session for purposes of contract negotiations. Second? It's been supported. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. We are going to go into closed session and we will not be returning with any kind of...